Everyone, please rise and have our students lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which has stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now, I would like to take just a moment of silence for a former employee of the Southington Schools. Richard Jones passed away on January twenty first of this year. He worked for Southington Schools from September nineteen eighty-two until his retirement in two thousand and two, during that time serving as a department head for the Southington Regional Agricultural Program. So, if we could please just bow our heads for a moment. Thank you. I'd like to look for a motion, if I could please, to move item eleven B, the approval of out-of-state overnight field trips, to item five A.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. And now, Mr. Medancy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is my honor and privilege to welcome Mr. Neo Reyes to our celebration of excellence this evening. Neo submitted an essay around the, it was the Martin Luther, annual Martin Luther King Junior Day Essay Contest, through, sponsored by Senator Murphy, and he was one of fifteen students chosen out of several hundred applicants. And Senator Murphy notified us and he's going to be, well, he was invited, at a celebration on February twelfth. And I know Mr. Lasberry is here tonight, and Neo, we would like to recognize and honor you. I don't know if you have anything you want to share this evening, or if you have anything you wanted to say, or if you don't mind if I read a short part of your essay? Is that okay? Okay. My great-grandparents were war refugees who migrated to the Philippines, the country where my parents grew up. Eventually, my parents migrated to the United States of America, the land of my birth. My ancestors, just like Martin Luther King Junior, lived in a country where they were considered an outcast. From the stories about my grandparents' struggles to the hardships that my parents once encountered as immigrants, discrimination is very real to me and not just a social issue from a movie or article. And even though I was lucky enough to have never experienced it firsthand, I know that it doesn't mean that it's not occurring in some parts of the world, or even here in my own country. As a kid, my idea of equality was a bit shallow. For instance, I take offense when a kid in the playground refuses to play with me, or if a classmate chooses to sit with someone else. But this situation does not even compare to what the African-American people in my own family experienced, thanks to my hero, Mr. Martin Luther King Junior, who fought for equality. Because of his heroic work, I was able to exist in a world where segregation is a thing of the past. I owe this privilege to Dr. King and all the other people who were brave enough to stand up for what's right. I am perfectly aware that this gift of equality is fragile and may one day slip our grasps. That's why we all have to work together to keep his legacy alive. For my part, I promise to honor Mr. Martin Luther King Junior and his advocacy by treating everyone around me with respect regardless of their race, nationality, or ability. One day in the future, I will also teach my kids to do the same, for this is the only way to keep our world a safe place and fair for all.
Wonderful. Neo, could you join me over here? There was something, I was gonna, I also have a copy of your, of what you wrote, and there was something that really struck me, and I would like to repeat it. For my part, I promise to honor Dr. Martin Luther King Junior and his advocacy by treating everyone around me with respect regardless of race, nationality, or ability. One day in the future, I will also teach my kids to do the same, for this is the only way to keep our world a safe and fair place for all. We can learn from you, Neo, we really can, and I, and I wish that everybody could hear those words, because one day, you're gonna be leading us, and I hope you keep those words in your heart, because I took them to heart as a reminder of how we're all supposed to be. So I thank you for writing this, and I thank you for sharing it, and I thank you for winning the award as well. And I would like to read something to you, because we're gonna present you with a certificate of excellence. To Neo Sebastian Reyes, having duly qualified under standards prescribed by the Southington Public School, you are hereby awarded this certificate of excellence for winning the essay in Senator Murphy's annual Martin Luther King Junior Day Essay Contest. And whereas the seal of the Southington Board of Education and the signature of the Board of Education chairperson, that's me, and the superintendent of schools, that's Mr. Medancy, are here unto you affixed on this twenty-fourth day of February two thousand twenty-two. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And well done, well done. And board members, if you'd like to come here.
If I can steal a quick minute for Neo? My name's Mr. Lasberry, I'm the Assistant Principal. Neo, we are incredibly proud of you. You stole my thunder, Mrs. Clark, you are truly inspiring and an example of what we should all inspire to be, not just as students, but as people. I thought your essay was incredibly thoughtful, inspiring, but also very courageous, especially the fact that you were willing to share your family connection to discrimination. So again, congratulations on behalf of myself, Mr. Palmieri, who apologized he couldn't be here tonight, and all of the Apollo family, congratulations, Neo, great job.
Madam Chair, would you like to call a five-minute recess?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so, getting back to, okay, now I'm looking for an approval of the minutes of January twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two's meeting.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
A motion, please, for the approval of the minutes of February eighth, the special meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, you guys are too quick. Okay, all, any, any questions, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. Now, some of you, if you haven't seen the, the agenda, the public communications have switched it up a little bit.
Madam Chair, point of order?
Yes.
You skipped over the two agenda items, you moved up.
How foolish of me, I'm going right through and barreling through, see, this is my problem. Okay, so, then we moved up item five A, the field trip?
Yes, so, we have.
I skipped right over those old suckers.
So we have a field trip request for the DECA International Career Development Conference in Atlanta, Georgia, and I think I see some DECA representatives here tonight who wanted to come up and speak?
Oh, yes, you do.
Hi, I'm Sandy Spinello, and I am one of the DECA co-advisors, and tonight, we're looking for approval for our, hopefully, our trip for some winners to the international conference. Our state conference is next week, and should we have those winners, we'd like to travel to Atlanta, Georgia for the international conference. And I brought a couple of my students, who are officers of our organization this year, just to talk to you for a couple of minutes.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Max Hotchkiss, I'm the president of the chapter here at SHS.
And my name's AJ Senna, I'm the VP of Membership. A little blurb for you guys. So this year's been extremely successful for our store. As many of you guys know, we sell cookies and apparel. And this year, not only have our sales been great, but we got our store recertified at the gold level at the School Based Enterprise for DECA. On top of that, we have received three spots for this certification for our stores. We've already secured three, looking to find more this Tuesday at our state-level competition. Our membership levels are really good this year, over a hundred paid members already, twenty-five plus competing on Tuesday at the state level. Our members have been really engaged, we've had really good numbers at the meetings, on top of the paid members. Obviously, as I previously stated, our food sales are good due to the fact we can sell food again. It was a challenge last year for us, making money without being able to sell food, and our revenue has been steady due to our growth in apparel sales as well.
Alright, so, my first time competing in DECA was back in two thousand twenty, during my sophomore year at the state competition, which is coming up this year, next week, I believe on Tuesday. During this event, I was able to develop my own teamwork and business skills, as well as meet other students and network with other individuals that share my interests in business. And that year, I actually ended up placing fifth in the state for my competition category. And something that I really took from this competition was that it kind of helped to show me, like, my own future goals, and it gave me the understanding that I was extremely interested in business and, and becoming a leader in business, and which led me to becoming the president of the chapter itself. So, following our state competition next week, we hope to be able to continue on to the national level, which is in Atlanta, Georgia this April. And so, after competing in the online state and national competitions last year, I really understood the importance of having in-person competitions, and how much better they are compared to the online ones that I saw and I competed in last year. Not only will we be able to compete with actual people and have that social networking opportunity, but the in-person national competition will also allow our members to attend various workshops, which help focus on developing their leadership and business skills. And I believe that it's extremely beneficial to give this opportunity to our members, because it's not only going to allow our current seniors to further develop their skills, but it's, also exposes our younger members to experiences that will help develop their own leadership and communication abilities, and I just think it would be extremely beneficial, you know, for us to be able to go on this trip. So with that being said, thank you guys for, you know, giving me the time to talk tonight, and for your continued support of our club.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Need a motion, Mrs. Clark?
Yeah, I'd like to move to the Board of Education to approve the out-of-state field trip, as requested and presented this evening.
Second.
Any discussion, any comments?
I have one.
Okay.
You will network, and I'm, I'm a lot older than you, and I did this back in nineteen, well, in the eighties, like, nineteen eighty. Long time, and I'm still in touch with people, I mean, I was in the other organi, I was in FBLA, the other one. But I'm still in touch with people that I was in touch with during high school in FBLA, so make sure you do your networking, because you will truly be in touch with them for a long time. Enjoy.
Good luck.
Thank you, good luck.
We wish you the best of luck, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. And now, going to, to item five B, the Southington High School graduation date, Mr. Medancy.
So we are proposing to adopt the graduation date of Friday, June seventeenth, with a rain date of Saturday, June eighteenth. In my conversation with the high school administration, if we were to do it on the Saturday, the eighteenth, as a rain date, it would be done earlier in the day, probably like a one-thirty in the afternoon type of event versus later on Saturday evening. But as of right now, if we set the date today, it won't change, even with further snow days. So my recommendation is that the board makes a motion to adopt June seventeenth this evening as the graduation date, so we can begin the planning and announcing.
I would need a motion, Mrs. Carmody.
I, I make a motion that we have graduation on June seventeenth, with a rain date of June eighteenth.
Correct. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did you get that, students? Okay.
Yes.
So since they just did that, you don't have to make up tomorrow's snow day on Monday, the twentieth. You realize that, so you won't be big.
And it's public, you can share that with everybody, so, okay, all good, all good, okay. Now, those are the two, alright, I just want to make sure I'm doing this in the right order. Now, may I, communications from our student representatives, please?
Well, good evening, board, I hope all is well, and with that communication, I'm looking forward to our three-day weekend that I do not have to make up in June. So, to begin our report tonight, Silver Store has started back up for the first time in two years at the high school. We are thrilled to have the fifth graders of Southington at our high school, with their love for music once again, to be shared with SHS marching band. This Saturday marks the annual camp sloper plunge, polar plunge, as tomorrow's snowstorm will put many back in the mood for frigid waters. I'd like to recognize Mr. Croco, I don't have any comment on that, but the town of Southington raised over seven hundred and eighty dollars, and yes, Mr. Croco will be jumping in. So we are very excited to see that.
Welcome to Southington.
Good evening, I'll continue our report with some theater and junior news. The Southington High School's production of The Little Mermaid will be held on March fourth at seven PM, and March fifth at three PM and seven PM. The cast and crew have been working incredibly hard to bring the show together, and we are very excited for all of you to see the magic. Southington's Unified Theater Show will be held on March eighteenth with the theme "Inclusivity Through the Decades." As one of the directors, I strongly encourage you come see the show, as we were having a ton of fun putting it together. Southington High School's STEM Without Boundaries Club is hosting STEM Night on March eleventh for all elementary students. There'll be presentations from all different STEM organizations, including Mystic Aquarium. This is a virtual event from six to eight PM that you can sign up for through an email that was sent to everyone in the district. For the junior news, junior prom tickets will be sold starting Monday, February twenty-eighth, from seven fifteen to seven thirty in the mornings, and from seven fifteen to, nope, from two fifteen to two thirty in the afternoon. Table arrangements must be done before purchasing tickets, and payment can either be exactly ninety dollars, or the check can be made to SHS class of two thousand twenty-three. You must note that students cannot purchase a ticket if they owe any books to the school. And lastly, SAT testing for the juniors will take place on March twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. If any students are looking for resources, Khan Academy is a great place to study. Onto some news from JFK. CT State Trooper Susie Cecile met with JFK students in grade-level assemblies to present healthy decisions, positive communication, and your digital tattoo. This is a program delivered to students, to schools all around the state.
Moving to our Kelly School, under the leadership of our fifth grader STEM ambassadors, they held their annual Super, Super Bowl Drive this, earlier this month. They set a goal of collecting over thirteen hundred cans, but we will surpass that by collecting over fifteen hundred cans. This added up to twelve, one thousand two hundred and eighty-nine pounds of food being donated to Southington Community Services from the Kelly School and students and families. Moving into our sports report, the SHS Girls Gymnastics Team, the defending Class L and state open champions traveled to Jonathan Law High School this Saturday at one PM to compete in this season's Class L Championship Meet. The Blue Knights Girls Basketball Team won the CCC West Regular Seasons Championship a week ago, and they were semifinalists in a conference tournament this past week. The girls will play in the Class Double L State Championship Tournament Monday night at home versus West Hill High School. The Boys Swimming and Dive Team also won the CCC West Regular Seasons Championship, and they will be competing in the conference diving and swimming championships next Monday at the West Minister School in Sinsbury for diving, and Tuesday at the Cornerstone Pool in West Hartford for swimming.
The Southington Cheerleading Team took first place in the CCC West Division Competition last Saturday, and won second place overall. The girls will compete this Saturday in Oxford and Sunday in Wilkett. The wrestling team, led by one hundred thirty-two-pound Class Double L State Champion Senior Ben Gore, has five wrestlers that have qualified for this weekend's CIAC State Open Individual Championships at Hill House, Hill House High School in New Haven. The team finished fifth overall at, at the Class Double L Championship meet last weekend at Tremble High School. The Blue Knights Boys Co-op Ice Hockey Team celebrates Senior Night in conjunction with the seniors from Hall High School Monday night in the regular season finale versus Hall at the Veterans Memorial Ice Rink in West Hartford at seven twenty PM. Longtime coach of the former Southington High, former Southington Hall Co-op Team, Brian Cannon, will be recognized for his service to both schools' hockey programs.
Thank you again.
Thank you, students. Any questions of the students?
Just a, a quick comment. I had the privilege of attending the cheerleading competition on Saturday, and absolutely phenomenal team, and, and bunch of girls that put together a fantastic performance. My one comment would be, we lost the overall championship to Plainville, so we need to get that corrected for this, this coming weekend, okay? But fantastic job, and, and definitely pass it along to your classmates.
Thank you so much, it means a lot to us, thank you.
Okay. Communication from board members?
Yes, Mrs. Clark.
Yes, Mrs. Carmody.
I, I had the privilege of, I forgot which night it was, going to Stella.
Oh, yes.
Program, a, a bunch of us went, and I had never been there, so I wasn't certain what it was going to look like and be like. I am so very proud of what we are doing for that age group of special ed students, adults, actually, in Southington, and to look at all of the things that our community is doing with our students. We should be very, very proud of Southington for all that they are doing, and the two teachers that are running that program. I know several of us were there, and it was quite impressive, quite impressive.
For those who aren't aware, we have a program for what we refer to in school as super seniors, children who are between the ages of eighteen and twenty-one, and the life skills that they're being taught at Stella are absolutely amazing, and the facility, the, the home-like atmosphere in this, in this building, it, it's amazing. So hats off to, to all the teachers that are working there, all the people that work there to take care of these students. It's really, they're doing a fabulous job.
How many years have we had that, Mrs. Clark?
Five.
Five?
That's all.
This is the first year in the new space?
In the new space, yeah.
Yeah, you guys approved a revised lease back in the fall, so.
Yeah, yeah, and they did a beautiful job decorating, it's just really outstanding, so. Any other board communications?
Yes, I can.
Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First and foremost, I want to again express my sincere appreciation to my colleagues on this dais for approving the letter to Hartford at our special meeting on February eighth. It shouldn't be overlooked that this board was able to put aside politics and find agreement on issues that impact so many children, parents, staff, and administrators across our town. While we may not agree on everything, we understand that each member has an individual voice that is valuable, and ideas that warrant consideration. The voters in Southington elected each of us because they trusted that we would work democratically to ensure our students receive the highest education standards, while always respecting the rights and freedoms that our great country promises all. Over the last week, events worldwide have shown us why this commitment to democracy and liberty is so important. In Canada, we witnessed the assault on free speech, assembly, and due process, and tonight, hundreds of thousands of Ukrainians are fleeing their homes and towns as Russia aims to pull their country back into the clutches of a ruthless dictatorship. I know foreign affairs and global politics aren't within the scope of this board's responsibilities. Maybe it's the veteran in me that compels me to respect, to, to reflect. We would be remiss not to take this opportunity to remind ourselves of how precious democracy truly is. Reagan once said, "Freedom is never more than one generation away from extinction." It is up to us, the board, administrators, and the parents and voters in this room, to ensure that we educate our children and youth on the beauty and fragility of our system of government. We must continue to exercise our rights and responsibilities with respect and honor. May we always remember the sacrifices so many have made before us, and cherish what it means to live free in the United States of America.
Very well said, thank you. Anyone else? Then, communications from the administration, Mr. Medancy.
Okay, I will let Mr. Pepe start with the first couple items.
Thank you. Steps of sponsoring a parent university, excuse me, on March tenth from six to eight at the Calendar House. Film screening of Finding Hope, hosted by Christine Gagnon, as well as the paraphernalia project we'll run. Finding Hope is the same short film that our senior class will view during an upcoming capstone advisory session. Along the same front, you may recall that back in December, Mrs. Albanese and Deputy Chief Palmieri presented a new prevention curriculum, which will begin in fifth grade and subsequently push up six-twelve, and then down four through K in subsequent years. This curriculum delivery involves our own Southington Police working with our students in the class. The great news is that this homegrown curriculum has been picked up by a marketing company and will be made available nationally.
Awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Pepe. An update on masks in schools, board members, as you were apprised, through the guidance that was sent out to staff earlier and then families this afternoon, we will be mask optional on February twenty-eighth. I've sent out correspondence earlier this evening highlighting some of the anticipated questions we may receive with that shift. I'm sure I will receive more questions as this evolves, and we'll be certain to follow up with those families that have questions, and keep you included, as we usually do. The SCF Gala location, date, and time is May seventh. For those of you who have never been to the SCF Gala, it's a great organization, the Southington Education Foundation. It's gonna be held at the Pavilion at the Back Nine this year. And so that's a nice opportunity, they have not been able to have that fundraiser for the past couple of years, and the Education Foundation are great ambassadors for the children in our community. It was touched upon, but I just want to highlight, and they're still here, so for our DECA members, congratulations. I heard the mention of the Gold Star Certification, and you are one of only four hundred and sixty-one schools out of four thousand that received that recognition, and we were notified of that through a press release on February first, so congratulations to you. I received news, and I know I had talked with this board about trying to pursue grant funding to update the audiovisual equipment in this room, and so we received some news so far that we received a one thousand dollar cable advisory grant from the community, but we are, also have applied for and are waiting for an answer on a, about a hundred and forty thousand dollar grant from an organization called PegPisha, which would update all of the cameras, the audiovisual, and the rack system in the AV room. And it could also be used for future use for other, beyond public meetings, virtual telecasts. I know there's been conversations about Southington TV returning, and so we're looking to continue collaboration with the town about how we can use enhanced equipment. And then lastly, I am going to be inviting all of you, along with Board of Finance members and Town Council members, to a walking tour of the Southington High School athletic facilities. I know at the last Board of Education meeting, you approved a revised capital improvement plan, which swapped the elementary project with the athletic facilities and the roofs. And I, I don't think words would do it justice, I think if you took a tour of the facility and saw some of the areas that are of concern, it would, it would probably do justice to your actions on the twenty-seventh when you approved the revised plan. So I will try to keep it understanding that it gets dark at a certain time, but many of you are working during the day, so you can only get there at a certain time, I'll be cognizant of that. But there'll be an invite coming from my office to all elected officials, and we will host you for that. And then, as a follow-up to that, I'll be presenting to the Town Council, I will provide visuals for them, because some folks may not be able to attend a walking tour at their March Town Council meeting. I'm not sure which of the two meetings it will be yet, so I'll definitely let our board know. And Mr. Romano, I actually will be following up on that, not only in athletic facilities, but with further information on the roofs for the Town Council. Ultimately, they will be the ones that authorize the Town Manager to go to the Bond Council, and he's shooting for that to occur by May of this year, so that we can get it on the referendum for November of two thousand twenty-two. And that is all I have this evening.
Any questions for the administration? You good? We're good? Okay. Okay, communications from the public. I don't know, there's no particular, but we do have the timer. Just so you know.
Great.
Okay. But if you could give your name and address also, just for the...
Hi, my name is Jennifer Couture. I live on Prospect Street in Plansville, and, um, tonight I just have some questions to ask. Um, first question, how often do you binge eat? Eat a lot of food in a short period of time and then make yourself throw up or use laxatives to get rid of the food you've eaten? Second question, how many adults have you known for two or more?
Excuse me, Jennifer, could you just speak into the microphone, please?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. That's okay.
How many adults have you known for two more, two or more years who do things that are wrong or dangerous? During the average week, how many hours do you spend going to programs, groups, or services at a church, synagogue, mosque, or other religious or spiritual place? During the past twelve months, how many times have you damaged property just for fun, such as breaking windows, scratching a car, putting paint on walls? How many times have you hit or beat somebody up? How many times have you got in trouble in the, into trouble with the police, stolen, skipped, or ditched school? Which of the following describes you? Male, female, trans male, trans female, trans female to male, trans don't enti- identify as either male or female, not sure? Are you straight, gay, bi, mostly straight, only straight? How old are you? Eleven and younger, twelve, thirteen, fourteen? How many times have your parents purchased alcohol in the last week? During the past thirty days, have you used prescription drugs not prescribed to you? How many times have you driven drunk, used cocaine, heroin, driven a car, gotten into a car with someone drunk? Have you ever tried to kill yourself? Have you ever had sexual intercourse, gone all the way, or made love? These are a number of questions that were on a survey that were given to my twelve-year-old daughter during school yesterday, during her social studies first period class. As parents, we were given a letter saying that they were to receive a survey about drugs and alcohol and social behaviors, and we had the option to opt out. I never thought to opt out because I trust that the school is giving my daughter a survey that is not only, one, age appropriate, but, two, is going to do something to better the community. And when my daughter came home and told me, "Mom, they gave us this survey and they said, 'If I take this, it'll make Suddington a better place,'" and then started crying when she was telling me all the things that were on it, I was appalled. She showed me the link to the survey. These questions are directly from that survey, these questions that I'm asking you. So I want to know, why is the survey beneficial? Why was the survey given to my child? And what can we do to make sure that this doesn't happen again in the future? Now, I did email Mr. Medancy, and he replied to me that the surveys, you know, you can't get a copy of them because they are copyrighted and protected, so it's not like I could have went down there and obtained a copy. I could have viewed the survey first, but what reasonable parent is going to do that when we put our trust into the school system? So that's all I'm really gonna say about that, and, uh, I hope that we can do something to correct that. Thank you.
Michael Krasansky, twenty-seven Hitching Post Drive. Um, so I'm here to talk about a book and then relate it to, um, Suddington Public Schools. The book is called A Day in the Life of Ivan Denisovich. It's a book that I read many years ago back in high school. It's a story, as the title indicates, about one day in the life of a prisoner in a Soviet prisoner camp during the Stalinist era of the Soviet Union. The camps are operated by and under the authority of the communist state. One learns of the absolute cruel and dehuman, dehumanizing conditions that prisoners at this camp live under in the form of just detailing the events that occurred on one day to that one person in that camp. It is only one person's diary of the events of one ordinary day in the camp. No more information is provided or needed to comprehend how humans could be so wrong. These are things that are almost impossible for Americans today to comprehend. I recall the book hitting me so hard, as they didn't know at that young age that human beings could be treated so horribly. Um, so why am I talking about it here? It seems to me that our government and some school systems have been moving in the direction outlined in this book of a nameless, faith, faceless bureaucracy without regard for humanity. I'm not suggesting that in our country and schools we're in any way near the conditions of a Stalinist prison. However, there are plenty of concerning events happening now in our town and state and country and around the world that should give everyone pause. Some main takeaways from the book that relate to our society and schools today. According to what principles should one live in a seemingly absurd universe, controlled by forces which one can't understand and over which one has no control? Ivan meets only cruel minor officials of the government system who only obey orders but do not give explanations. The intellectuals around him do not seem to have the right answers, and the religious people explain to him the reason why he must suffer so cruelly. Their arguments are dogmatic, they're not logical or practical. Doesn't this sound similar to our world today during the pandemic? One should only ob- obey sensible orders and circumvent absurd ones. It is the duty of a human being not to resign and give up their struggle for survival. Rather than opting, adopting other people's behavioral codes, establish your own set of morals, which enable you to persevere with dignity. It is better to establish a personal code of behavior which dictates what one will not do just to preserve one's physical existence. Existence without dignity is worthless. In fact, loss of human dignity will also diminish the will and the capacity to survive. Spying and informing activities create distrust among people who should be cooperating rather than fighting among themselves. Um, nobody is ever released, uh, from the Soviet prison system. When one term ends, another one is added on. The real hope is that the current corrupt inefficient system will destroy itself from within. So it's a little bit extreme comparing, um, a Soviet stalag system to maybe the Suddington Public Schools or the state government or the federal government, but the point is there are worrying signs for me and many others in the country that are moving in that direction at all levels, okay? Including the school system. So what I'm gonna do is I'm here, I'm gonna provide a copy of the book that I encourage you to read or reread if your schedule permits. I think it may give you some insight into what can happen if people stop thinking and blindly follow rules, mandates, and dogma from above. If you're not able to read it, I encourage you to pass it on to someone else who has interest and may benefit from reading it. Um, thank you for your time. Before I do that, I just want to, um, echo Jennifer's comments too. I, I was in touch with Mr. Medancy, who is always very responsive. It is alarming, um, you know, the survey that went out. Um, you know, the little I know about it, and Jennifer filled me in more, um, you know, some of the questions I don't think were appropriate, like my daughter's in seventh grade, and, um, you know, I was horribly shocked. My daughter, I withdrew from the survey, I opted out, um, but I think really there needs to be some conversations going forward about these surveys, what's on them, and how one gets enrolled in it. Maybe they should be opt-in instead of opt-out. Maybe, um, if we're gonna use the same survey company, someone, you know, a panel gets together and decides what questions should be there and shouldn't be there. Maybe there should be some parent input prior to the survey, so that's just something I think needs a lot of time to look at it. I didn't speak about it tonight because I wanted to do this other thing, but I will in the future.
I only have ten books, uh, so one for each Board of Ed member and, uh, one for the Superintendent and the Assistant Superintendent. I forgot about you. I'm sorry, Mr. Pepe. I let you leave.
Colleen Dipalski. Do I have to save my address still, even though we put it in there? Whatever. It doesn't matter. Thirty-six Mulberry Street. Um, Mr. Williams, I wanted to thank you for, uh, what you've expressed on top of, um, with regards to the board and regards to mandates and the masking. It was very moving. I appreciate that. Um, I'm also here on behalf of Parents' Choice, and I'm very happy that masking is optional. As you know, I've been asking for that for a while. Um, but I also want to make aware that now that that is optional, we have now have to be able to find a way, and I hope that there is, and I think it was briefly spoken about, um, the effects that it's gonna have on the kids that are still scared and want to wear a mask. Um, Parents' Choice isn't just about one way or the other, it's about choice. So there is probably going to be children who still want to wear it. I hope that psychologically that is gonna be taken care of. Those are real fears that they have, um, and, uh, I don't want to see it going the other way and then being discriminated against. Um, having also said with regards to the survey that went out, that is disturbing, um, in regards to the buses, I'm not quite sure, there's rumors that they still have to wear the mask on the bus. That's really confusing for kids. It really is like, oh, we have to wear it on the bus. You don't have to wear it in school, and you don't have to wear it here. I mean, they've already been through a mental wring, you know, wring around. It's just crazy. So I really want to hope that you look into what type of mandate does, does the federal government have over that? Are school buses really state buses? If that's the case, then we do have the Tenth Amendment, which says that they can't intrude on the state. So we need to really, really look into rules and mandates and keep to that, what you've, um, touched on, Mr. Williams, with regards to, at what point do we say yes? I always say to somebody, "Never give authority to those who have none." So thank you for letting me speak. Have a good day.
Hi, Britt Lynch from Sheldon Road. Um, I've been here a couple times giving impassioned speeches, um, regarding masks and mask choice, so I thought it was only right that I come in publicly. Thank you as well. Um, you are put in the middle as the middle man, which is a tough place to be by, uh, the State Department of Education and DPH. Um, really should have gone to the parents, I believe, uh, from the governor, um, but, you know, you're stuck in the middle, and I know that's a tough place to be. So thank you so much for giving the decision back where it truly belongs to the parents for as long as you can, since they can, they can rescind it any time between now and June thirtieth. Also, I've heard it mentioned, um, at these meetings, uh, the board has been reminded by our chairwoman that, um, your first responsibility is to your students here at Suddington Public Schools, um, and that's true. Uh, but in regards to the masks, uh, your responsibility has actually, I should say, your influence has, uh, expanded further than that. Uh, by stepping forward and, uh, releasing that communication pretty early on, I think you gave a lot of confidence to other districts, uh, you gave confidence to the preschools. Um, I have, I speak here, my kids are not in kindergarten yet, but I've been speaking here because this is a place for me to be heard, and, uh, I contact the Commissioner of the Office of Early, uh, Childhood Education. She is completely unresponsive to parents. There's no, um, public forum such as this that I'm aware of where, uh, parents can go and make themselves heard. Um, so this was a way for me to do it, and I think that you, uh, really have influence and give confidence to these early childhood, uh, care centers. And I would like to think that maybe you'd have some influence in the colleges as well because I feel bad for them, but I doubt it. But I just want you to realize that your impact goes beyond just the students in your schools, and I thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Tyler Young from Berkeley Avenue. Um, I would like to start tonight by saying how happy I am that Suddington will now have mask choice starting on Monday. I hope that this remains the case indefinitely because although some kids may currently appear to not have had a problem having been forced to wear a mask for nearly ten hours a day, many others do. Our children are still experiencing anxiety, depression, and self-harm at an alarming rate. They have fallen behind in school and have experienced developmental delays, and many don't even want to be in school. I had the opportunity a few weeks ago to listen to the recent public informational hearing. During the emotional testimonies, I listened to a mom who spoke about her elementary school-age child who told her they wished they were dead because then they wouldn't have to wear a mask anymore. My own fourth grader dreads going to school because of masking and distance protocols. In fact, I found on a cross-stick note in her backpack that said, "School equals six cruel hours of awful life." Along with feeling heartbroken knowing that this is what she thinks of school, I also feel that perhaps if she wasn't now almost a full year behind in her learning, she would know that awful was spelt with an A and not an O. But because the focus has been on COVID protocols and not learning, she, along with many others, have fallen behind. The damage these burdens have caused to our children can't even begin to be calculated just yet. So if you're not in the business of health, like a board member stated at the last meeting, then I ask that you refrain from ever making medical decisions for our children again. Stop with the medical interventions of masking, testing, and vaccine clinics at our schools. I've read some of the newly issued guidance from the Department of Health about testing requirements and recommendations prior to the unmasking on Monday, and again, aside from these tests being inaccurate, they also contain har- harmful chemicals, and as an informed parent, I want to know that my children will not be coerced, forced into any medical procedures or interventions that I do not consent for them to have while they are at school. And I pray that the mask choice option will not lead to more segregation and shaming in our schools, because our children have been through enough and deserve to have their childhood restored, and they deserve to have a proper education that our tax dollars pay for. A proper education that does not involve CRT or any other radical teachings. I hope we have all learned from the past two years and do not allow for history to repeat itself come this fall. Thank you for your time, and Mr. Williams, thank you for your service. Have a good night.
Good evening. I'm Jamie Crisack. I live on Kendallwood Lane. Um, I wanted to come and just show my gratitude and say thank you for doing what you said that you were gonna do the first Board of Ed meeting, um, that you were going to fight for Parents' Choice when it comes to masking and, um, or unmasking our, our children. Um, I do have some questions, and I did read your, uh, guidance, as well as Mrs. Verteram's earlier today. Um, my nieces live in East Hampton, and they also got some guidance as well, which was very similar to yours, but one of the things that they did mention was that they are asking students to continue to wear masks on school buses as federal guidelines issued by the CDC still promote mask wearing on public transportation. However, the schools will not be delaying transportation before school or after school at this point to make sure that everyone is in compliance. The responsibility and choice for mask wearing has been shifted by the state of Connecticut from schools to parents. Um, I understand that the CDC, you know, still promotes this and wants to enforce this, but I guess I don't really understand how if children are being put on the same bus and then going to the exact same location where they're then gonna have the choice to remove a mask, how does it make them any safer or healthier to have to wear a mask on a school bus? And I agree with what was said before, that it is confusing for me to have to tell my first grader who has been complaining of having a hard time breathing for the past year and a half, well, sorry, sweetie, you have to put this on when you get on the bus. As soon as you get to school, make sure you take it off, and then when you get on the bus, make sure you put it on, and as soon as you get off the bus, let me rip it off your face. Um, playing, you know, CDC says is just not what we should be doing right now. So I don't know what, you know, the Board of Ed can do on the parents' behalf to try to amend this and, you know, allow us to have that, that choice as well on the school buses, because even though school buses are public transportation, it's really taxpayer di- dollars that are paid to just bring our kids to the same place. They're not getting onto a bus and then going to different locations where masks may or may not be required. So I would appreciate if we could try to amend that and remove that regulation so that if we do choose to not have our children wear masks, it can be a full choice to not have to have them wear masks. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Okay. Thank you all.
Okay. Thank you all. Um, moving on to item eight, uh, committee reports, policy and personnel committee meeting. Mr. Williams?
Madam Chair, the Policy and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, February 2nd. Um, the topics of discussion were Policy 3542.1, Purposes and Facilities, Food Service. It's a policy revision to comply with recent legislative changes. Um, just a couple of the highlights, no student will ever be deprived of reimbursable meal due to forgotten or lost money, procedures to change a meal or to charge a meal, and subsequent collection of owed money was reviewed. After thirty meals are charged, the family is referred to the district's homeless education liaison. Regulations to address a family effectively and respectfully for unpaid meals are in place through the associated reg- regulations. Um, and then there's some information about the, uh, when the policy will be distributed to, um, throughout, throughout the year, where it's available at online. It'll also be, uh, distributed, um, um, at the beginning of the school year. And then Policy 5145.3, Sexual Harassment of Students, policy provision to comply with recent legislative changes. Discussion ensued around Title IX, Sex Discrimination and Sexual Harassment, and the district's responsibility to investigate any such allegation based on the adopted policy and associated regulations. All members were in favor of bringing the aforementioned policies forward to the board for a first reading.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Williams. Um, next meeting was the Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting of February 11th. Um, I know you weren't there.
I was unable to attend.
Yeah, yeah. So, Mr. Pepe?
Sure. February 11th, our meeting was held. Um, first grade science units were presented by Melissa O'Neill and Amy Zepone. There are four new units. Playground Shadows, Unit One, Film Animation, Unit Two, Senses and Nature, Unit Three, and Seasonal Changes, Unit Four. Um, all of the units involve students actively engaged in, uh, exploration and creation. For instance, the Playground Shadows, the students end up, uh, creating sundials as a culminating project. Mrs. Savical presented Library and Media, Grades Three through Five, new units, Tech and Digital Citizenship, demonstrates how to be a good digital citizen. The Grade Three unit, Who Am I Online? What Am I Doing? And Am I Believing What I'm Seeing Online? Grade Four, What to Share, How to Keep Things Private, Editing Media Online? Grade Five, Cyberbullying and Behavior Online?
Mr. Pepe, we'd like to, um, just mention what, um, Jasper had to add to that. Do you remember?
I think she's referencing, um, we talked about the, uh, the, the technology and how it's being used now for the students, and one of the things I brought up is my daughter is in fourth grade, and, um, she comes home and she's showing us like with her Google, Google, Google Slide documents, um, the work that she's doing with her fellow classmates. And I mean, she's putting together Google Slides that are, that are honestly like professional quality. It's pretty impressive to see they're putting out these newsletters. It's, it's amazing. And she's showing me all the cool things she's learning, interacting with other students and what have you. So I just wanted to make a note of that, especially as we, you know, with new technology being inserted into the schools, obviously we have, uh, responsibility to make good use of, um, of those assets. So I, I just think it's a great opportunity. So.
Thank you. The third unit, Innovative Design focuses on computer coding and directly connects to our EI work within the district. Uh, the conversation then shifted, next agenda item was information from questions that were raised during the January 14th CNI meeting. Language Arts Coordinator, Stephanie Lawler, and Classroom Teacher Carrie LaFerrier shared the context for one of the five implicit bias videos that are utilized in Grade Eight ELA classes. The lesson described is not focused on implicit bias, but rather the video is used to instill the importance of a rereading strategy through turn and talk that identifies what was complicated, what did you see, what did you not understand. Uh, I then offered further answers to questions that were raised during the CNI meeting from January 14th. A description of the Citizenship and Action Course was, was listed and is in your notes. Uh, the enrollment reported that all juniors engage in the course. Currently, we have four classes running with a total of eighty-three students. Uh, talking points were offered by Assistant Principal Richard Royan and Department Leader Heather Allenback, who described the larger context regarding when and if the implicit bias videos are used. The purpose is student-centered, focused with a graphic organizer consisting of two columns, one notable quote or detail, and two, your observation or comment. The exercise is used as a stepping stone to define and introduce media bias. Nothing in the lesson focuses on a student releasing their own bias. Instead, it is directed to empower students as consumers of information via metacognitive reflection. Discussion ensued around Board Policy 6144, which deals with teaching controversial issues. Essentially, instructors have a responsibility to provide the opportunity for responsible discussion around controversial issues. These discussions are objective and representative of all major points of view. Instructors approach these issues as an impartial manner and cannot promote a partisan view. It is critically important for students with differing views to express themselves to others civilly. This is real-world application. The meeting was adjourned at ten twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Pepe. Do you have Mrs. Carmody, Mr. Williams, whoever was at the meeting? Do you have any further comments you wanna add?
No.
No? Okay. Any questions?
So, I had a question. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the meeting. I had watched the, um, the five films that was discussed at the meeting, and, um, I guess my, my question is, in talking with my colleagues, um, that there's still a little uncertainty, um, in reference to those. Um, would it be then the committee to sort of reevaluate the usefulness of those videos in, in curriculum? And this is just me asking the question, because I've never run into a situation like this before. Or do we have a discussion as a board in regards to these videos?
Mr. Medancy?
The board actually has a policy for a review of curriculum material, and there is a form that is filled out, and there's a committee that is appointed, and they review the instructional material that's in question.
Okay. So I, I guess I would, is that a, something that I have to make a motion to, to do, or is that something that we could?
Any, any member of the public or any board member surely could do that.
Great. So I would request that we do that.
So do we do it at a meet?
I could do it off.
Yeah.
Offline?
Offline, yeah.
Okay. Um, did anybody else have any questions or comments? I just wanna know one thing. Can I go to first grade, please? Because I lo- I love the idea of the engagement that you have with the students and building a sundial. Oh, my goodness, that is, that and, um, the Library Media, Grades Three through Five, do we continue that? I mean, all that, we started there in the third grade to be the good digital citizen, and it continues on building that citizenship throughout their career here at Southington?
Formally, uh, as, as you know, the elementary schools, uh, have formal Library and Media Center time, uh, as part of their specials area. When you hit the middle school and high school, it looks different, uh, so there isn't an associated curriculum, cause it's not necessarily a class, but it is then embedded within the work and research, uh, and, and the various courses.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Um, lastly, the Finance Committee report. Ms. Roshan, I was filling in.
The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, the fifteenth, and we started with a financial update of the food service program. Uh, Kaya Hill, our county manager, went over the financial statements for the program for June thirtieth, twenty twenty, and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and those statements are all in our packet, so you all had a chance to review them. We did have a loss those two years due to COVID, but we're able to ensure, and we use the ESER two funds to cover that loss as well as, uh, in, in the way of a loan from the Board of Education to the, to the food service program. And we're continuing to participate in the Seamless Summer Option, where students are provided breakfast and lunch at no cost. And because of this, and the balance sheet is in our, our packet also, the balance sheet shows a significant decrease in cash, because these meals are free. But, um, uh, the government reimbursements increased, so you can see a, a balance between those two. Government reimbursements increased while cash decreased. These reimbursements are, are actual receivables that will be converted once the cash is received, uh, uh, here in the district. And there's a lag time between when the meals are served and when we actually get the reimbursement, but in the end, it comes out to a virtual wash. Um, we also discussed the loan that the board gave, uh, to the program and the parameters that the board put around any potential repayments. Then we went over some other financial statements and did a comparison over the last three years, showing how the program was impacted by COVID. The good news is that even with these challenges, uh, the program did have a net income of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars this year. And, and what's really important to point out is that, uh, all the hard work that Nia Walensky and her team have put into this, now the school is back to full in-person and having these free meals, the number of meals served has increased over a hundred thousand to over, by over a hundred thousand than what they were serving, and she and her team really stood up and stepped up to service our students. So we wanna thank them for all the work that they did to get this done for our students. And then the next item on the agenda was the financial review that Mrs. Mallett went over, uh, with the committee. It's still really early in the year, but the packet that you have shows, a document that shows the budget, by-budget line item, any, uh, projected surpluses or deficits that are projected based on the information we have at this time. Again, it's really early, so more information is gonna come as we get closer to the end of the school year. And that's it. That was our report.
Any questions?
Um, not a question, just a comment. Um, um, as part of that committee meeting, um, I, I, I just wanna make it known for the record that, um, that I had concern and question about the loan, um, given to sustain this program, um, by, uh, previous board. Um, it was stated, and, and I agree, you know, based on the parameters that were discussed, that, that this would be a one-time, um, exception, um, this three hundred thousand dollar loan. Um, and moving forward, this is a self-sustaining food program, um, that's done to a very high level. Um, and I just want the board to know and the public to know that I have my eye on it, and it will continue to sustain itself. Um, and a loan is not something that, um, will be considered moving forward. Um, and, you know, that's the, that's really my only comment, um, in regard to, um, our committee meeting.
And I think it's important to note out that in the entire time that this food service has been in place, it's been self-sustaining. There's never been a loan made to the, to the food service program until COVID hit. And we're seeing, now that we're coming out of COVID, that the sustainment is coming back. So it's, it shows that it's working, and I think, I, I don't think we will see another loan, but instead of letting it go under, we had to make sure that we were there for the students, so that we had the, the food for them.
And, and I also think it's important, um, to note that we are one of the few districts, um, in the entire state that, um, runs their, their own internal food program. Um, many other districts and, and I'm sure, um, Superintendent can speak to this, um, contract out to third-party providers to run their food programs. Um, so it's something for Southington to be proud of, um, the fact that it is self-sustaining, and it, it is a very unique thing. Um, but, you know, with, with all that said, um, it's important to, to know and understand that we're also, uh, fiscally responsible with this. Um, and...
Okay. Mr. Geronowski? No? You're good? Okay. Anyone else? Then moving to item number nine, the Personnel Report. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Personnel Report as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, okay. Old business, Town Government Communications. Mr. Medancy, do you have anything?
I do.
I do. You were there. We, uh, had our presentation to the Board of Finance on February the ninth, and I must commend Mr. Medancy, um, Mr. Pepe, Mrs. Mallett, um, the process. We were invited to sit up with, with the Board of Finance, which we've never done that before. Um, but our, our administration gave a very good report, gave, presented the budget in a very understandable fashion that even I understood, and, um, the questions were ver- were very good from the Board of Finance, and I'm, I know we've all gotten the, um, question and answer grid, and the questions have started to come forth. I don't remember, though, when we are meeting with them for their workshop. Is that March?
So the public hearing is at DePaulo Middle School on March seventh, and then our workshop is on March ninth.
Okay, okay. So we are all invited to that. Okay. And that's the only thing. We did not have the meeting of the chairs, because a few of the chairs were out of town on Monday, Tuesday, whenever the day it was. We didn't have our meeting, so we will be having it in March. Um, okay. The next item is the Science Kindergarten Units, second reading. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the Science Kindergarten Units as recommended by the Curriculum and Instruction Committee. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
New business. I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to invite up, uh, Mr. Romano, our Director of Operations this evening. Um, at the last board meeting, there was some public comment around air quality, and there was a request by a board member to put air quality on the agenda for a future meeting, so here we are. Mr. Romano?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the Board of Education. I, for the record, again, Peter Romano, I am the Director of Operations for the school system. Uh, when preparing for the discussion regarding indoor air quality, I struggled with what was important to share and how much information is enough without boring some and overwhelming others. The subject of indoor air quality is broad-reaching. I thought, if I were a board member, or more importantly, if I was a parent listening, what is it that I'd want to know? So let's start with this. Indoor air quality, programming, monitoring, and observation include not only the Southington Public Schools staff, but also outside consultants and monitoring companies. Most important thing is we do not do this alone. We include the local health district and the State Department of, of Public Health. We also get guidance from the state of Connecticut, the DEEP, and the EPA. Connecticut General Statute, Chapter 170, Section 10 dash 220, Subsection D, Duties of a Board of Education, is where indoor air quality is identified. It's one paragraph, it's a mouthful, some of which may surprise you as being considered indoor air quality. It does, though, provide a lot of subject matter applicable for this discussion, so allow me to share with you the fourteen items in this one paragraph labeled indoor air quality. One, Heating and Ventilation and Air Conditioning Systems, otherwise known as HVAC. Two, radon levels in the school. Three, Potential for Exposure to Microbiological Airborne Particles, including but not limited to fungi, mold, and bacteria. Four, Chemical Compounds of Concern to Indoor Air Quality, including but lo- not limited to volatile organic compounds. You probably know that as VOC. Five, The Degree of Pest Infestation, including but not limited to insects and rodents. Six, The Degree of Pesticide Use. Seven, The Presence of and the Plan for Removal of Any Hazardous Substance That Are Contained on the List Prepared Pursuant to Section 302 of the Federal Emergency Planning and Community Right-to-Know Act. It's mouthful. Number eight, Ventilation Systems. Nine, Pl- Plumbing, Including Water Distribution Systems, Drainage Systems and Fixtures. Ten, Moisture Incursion. Eleven, The Overall Cleanliness of the Facility. Twelve, Building Structural Elements, Including but Not Limited to Roofing, Basement, or Slabs. Thirteen, The Use of Space, Particularly Areas That Were Designated to Be Unoccupied. And fourteen, The Provision of Indoor Air Quality Maintenance Training for All Building Staff. Yep, in that one paragraph is an overabundance of information. The following are what I consider the information as it relates to Southington Public Schools that you would want to understand from it. Starting with Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning Systems. HVAC, great place to start. It's what most people think of when they hear the words indoor air quality, right? So Southington Public Schools has six full-time Tech One staffs on this maintenance group that service our HVAC systems. Two of them are dedicated HVAC technicians. The other four are either electricians or plumbers, all of which are hands-on servicing our HVAC equipment. HVAC equipment in the district is inspected and serviced quarterly or on an as-needed basis if sooner. Servicing includes belts and inspections, uh, replaced as needed, coils inspected and if necessary cleaned, refrigerant is inspected, inspection of wires and hoses for wear, most importantly, filter changes. All filters are replaced on a quarterly basis. The only exception, the classrooms at Flanders and Kelly, where we are running the fresh air intakes twenty-four seven, we change those filters on a monthly basis. We change those filters on a monthly basis. We always use the maximum rated filter that the unit can support, which is typically a Merv thirteen. We were doing that pre-COVID, continuing to do it COVID, and we've continued to do it after that. On average, this district spends thirty thousand dollars a year on air filters alone, just on air filters. There are energy management systems that are integral to the HVAC systems in nine of our twelve schools. Karen Smith Academy, Flanders Elementary School, and Kelly Elementary School do have individual thermostats that are, that are not tied to our energy management system. Radon levels, next topic. Radon levels are checked at the schools every five years by an outside industrial hygienist. Families of the schools that are being tested are notified in advance that we are performing the tests. The industrial hygienist strategically places and collects the test canisters that make up at least ten percent of the area of the school. The devices are sent to an independent testing lab for evaluation of the radon levels. The results are submitted to the state of Connecticut DPH and kept on file at the school. These reports are public and are available for any individual requesting them. Potential for exposure to microbiological airborne particles, including but not limited to fungi, mold, and bacteria. Throughout the years, we have had isolated incidents where staff or parents expressed concern, mostly about mold. We first perform in-house inspections and then follow up with a visit and testing by an industrial hygienist when it's warranted. Chemical compounds of concern to indoor air quality. This is directly, uh, directed primarily at VOCs. VOCs are typically found in the off-gassing of new furniture, flooring, paint, and cleaning chemicals. All furniture, flooring, and equipment that the district purchases are commercially sourced and primarily purchased from companies that are vendors for schools and university systems. This is the best way to prevent a purchase of material with a high VOC level. All the paint we use in the district are low VOC. The district uses a green, a green cleaning program, which are low or no VOC. We do not use any aerosol products in the district. The degree of pest infestation, insect, and rodents. The district has both a pest and a rodent management plan. The plans are written and monitored by our pest control consultant and are published on our websites. Insect infestation generally is not an issue in our buildings. The closest we come to insect infestation is in the fall with bees, hornets, and wasps. Rodent infestation is an area that we monitor all year, but we focus on in the fall. The cold overnight temperature will bring rodents to the building. We contract with a pest control vendor to treat and trap if there's a presence of rodents. Another safeguard in place for this is the local health department routinely visits our kitchens, which is an area where the rodents would try to get to, and they're trained to, to look for those as well. The degree of pesticide usage. We strictly limit the use of pesticides on our campus of the schools. Pesticides are only dispensed by the pest control company when removal of the nests is not, are not possible. Twenty-four hours notice is posted on the school's website prior to a treatment, and treatment can only happen outside of school hours when the students are not in school. Long pesticides are banned from use at our elementary and middle schools. They are available for use at the high school. At SHS, we only use them on the ballfields, and that's handled by our AgSci program. The presence of and the plan for removal of hazardous substances that are contained on the list. Prepared pursuant to section three oh-two of the Federal Emergency Planning and Community Right-to-Know Act. This can be the, considered the catch-all for the state of Connecticut. The hazardous substance list that they refer to is thirty-five pages long with about fifty, uh, substances on each page. So you're talking about one thousand seven hundred and fifty or so substances. The substances that are typically considered for the school system as they relate to Southington are asbestos, lead, lead paint, and PCBs. Asbestos is a filler product that can only be dangerous when it's loose or friable. You may have heard the term AHIRA. If you haven't, you'll probably hear it soon. AHIRA is the Asbestos Hazardous Emergency Response Act. Every three years, an asbestos consultant is retained by our district to inspect the schools and prepare the AHIRA report that is required to be submitted to the state of Connecticut. The report identifies the areas in the school where asbestos-containing materials are located. Integral to the AHIRA report, the head custodian at the schools perform a periodic surveillance every six months. They confirm the asbestos-containing material is, hasn't been disturbed, and they record it on an inspection form. Lead paint. Lead paint is assumed to be in the previous layers of paint in any building constructed prior to nineteen seventy-eight. Our schools have been painted many times since nineteen seventy-eight. Uh, if the top layer of the paint in the building is not chipped or peeling, in other words, it's encapsulated, lead paint is not an issue. If it is going to be disturbed, even if our guys have to put a screw to hang a plaque, we take the appropriate steps and the work is done when the students are not in the school. If schools are going to be renovated, new, an addition, or demolition, the building will be tested, recorded, and the material is handled according to EPA guidelines. Again, no student or staff are in the school. Lead water supply pipe, we have no lead water supply pipe in this district. Everything we have is either copper or PEX. It's, but lead is not an issue. PCBs. All buildings constructed prior to the government ban of PCBs in nineteen seventy-eight are assumed to have some PCBs in them. Similar to lead paint, if they're not disturbed, they don't pose a threat to staff or students. Old lighting ballasts, which provide power to the fluorescent light bulbs, are the most common areas where PCBs are found. The district was proactive many years ago and replaced all the lighting ballasts. All lighting ballasts now are electronic and there's no PCBs in them. Plumbing, including water distribution systems, drainage systems, and fixtures. All of our schools are on the public water system. We have no wells. Well, at the start of each school year, we work with the Southington Water Department to flush all the lines, and they test the water for us at each school. So my comments and thoughts beyond the state information presented that are relevant to this discussion. CO2 levels. What's not mentioned in the state indoor air quality information is the level of CO2 in the schools. In most cases, if not every indoor air quality seminar that I have attended since the start of COVID. The level of CO2 in the building is paramount to the discussion. The goal, we are continually reminded, is to have CO2 levels to be less than one thousand parts per million. For reference, the CO2 level of outside air is about four hundred parts per million. So you'll never get it to be better than four hundred parts per million. Your, your, your goal is to be less than a thousand. The high school and the middle schools have CO2 levels that are monitored by the energy management system. In the elementary schools during the winter months, when the windows are closed, we do spot-check the classrooms with our CO2 meters. If they are near or, or exceeding one thousand parts per million, we make adjustments to the HVAC equipment to increase the fresh air into the building. Therefore, lowering the CO2 levels in the classrooms that are acceptable. I chair the district safety committee, which meets quarterly and to discuss safety and health concerns district-wide. There's representative members from the admin- administration, teachers, nurses, para, food service, custodian, and maintenance units that participate in this group. With the exception of the COVID conversation early on in the pandemic, indoor air quality has never been expressed as a concern at any of our schools. We, we do a pretty good job here. Outside environment. The state law prohibits school bus operators from idling the engines of stopped buses for more than three consecutive minutes, with certain exceptions in the wintertime. There's a couple others. But the purpose of this is to minimize the potential for exhaust fumes to get pulled into the fresh air systems to the schools. I belong to the Connecticut School Buildings and Grounds Association, which has ninety-seven members across the state. Indoor air quality is a subject that we've discussed frequently every single year, again, pre-COVID and during the COVID. Indoor air quality technology has been pushed down the district since the start of COVID. Some of the stuff is interesting. Some of it, you're really just shaking your head saying, why are they trying to do this? So far, none of the, has, none of us have adult, developed a comfort level that will allow us to recommend to our districts that they should invest in the heavy price tag of equipment purchased that were being shown. Having said that, um, one of the districts is now performing a study on bipolar ionization in one of their classrooms. They hired an independent industrial engineer firm to set up parameters and to perform the before and after results. They tested air quality in advance, cleaned the coils, changed the filters, and installed the equipment. We're really excited to see where the results, results are going to be on that. I'll be glad to share them with you when we do get them from that community. My closing thoughts. The health and safety of our staff and students is paramount to what operations and maintenance do every day that we're here. We have excellent custodial staff. These individuals care about the staff and students. When it comes to any of the subjects that I spoke about, they have knowledge. If something isn't correct in their house, they are not going to put themselves, staff, or students in harm's way at their school. The maintenance staff is cut from a similar cloth with a lot of pride. They too do not allow problems to fester in the schools. Short-term goals, long, mid-range goals, and long-term goals. On the short term, as you've probably been informed, there are a couple reports that have not been posted on our website, never have been. Uh, we'll work with staff to get this corrected. It's something we do owe to the, to the district, uh, but it's, we, it's not a problem. Mid-range goals, uh, we're going to continue to explore opportunities to improve indoor air quality district-wide. Uh, also, one of my mid-range goals is there are companies coming out with CO2 monitoring systems that we could use in the elementary school that are wireless. Candidly, they're being tested in Europe right now. I'm not sure why they beat us to the punch. But I would love to have that so that we would have something instead of just us walking around with meters checking. It's not been an issue, but there is a, there is a comfort level to know what, what the CO2 levels are in the schools. So I'd, I'd, someday I will be coming to you asking for funding for that. Long-term. My long-term goal is to get air conditioning in all the elementary schools. It is the best way to provide the basic controls of indoor environment. Uh, my final statement, we can always do better. We owe it to the staff and students and their families, and we'll continue to strive for improvement. Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Carson?
Um, Mr. Romano, I'll be, I'll be the first to make comment just because I'm, I'm probably the reason why you're, you're standing in front of us and speaking to us today. So I just want to say thank you.
Sure.
You know, this is, what you just gave us is part of the reason why I ran and I'm sitting here tonight is. It is, it is about the public. It is about our students. And to me, it's about transparency, safety, and excellence. And what you do, just demonstrated in your, in your reporting, in putting together this presentation demonstrates to me. And I hope it demonstrates to our entire town that you expel excellence in your job and in performing your job. And that's kudos to you and your entire team. Um, I'd just like to be the first to say that. A secondary comment is all these reports, um, you know, in meeting indoor air quality laws. Um, all the oversight commissions and committees and things like that. All those reports are done. Kept compliance. They're on record. Um, the second piece of making those, some of those reports available, um, you know, to our parents, to our residents, to the board. Um, on the website, that's, that's fantastic. I'm all in favor of it. Um, and I just have a question, I, I guess as a follow-up to that. Has? Has the district ever been? I'll just take the past three years.
Sure.
Has the district ever been cited by DPH, DEEP, OSHA, or any of these other commissions? As to our indoor air quality not meeting standard?
No, sir. Nope.
Okay, and, and that, that speaks to everything that, that you and your team do. Um, and it's reassuring that us as a board, we're, we're putting our students in environments that have good air quality. Meet standards, meet legal requirements, and allows them to get an education, which is why they're in those buildings. Um, and it's important to communicate that not only to us, but in a public forum where everybody knows that. Um, trusts that and believes in that. Um, and it's, it's great to have you as part of the team and, and on board, and thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Carson. You said it early on. I, I can't take the credit for it. I am blessed to have an incredible team, again, maintenance and custodial staff. And the outside support that we have, i- i- you know, we don't shy away from it. We do take it very seriously. I've had three stu- three children of my own. They've come through the school system. I love what I do. It's, it's important to us. So thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Johnson?
I just had a couple of questions, Mr. Romano.
Sure.
So you mentioned about the CO2 levels that it, basically we try and keep it below a thousand parts per million. Um, is there a particular number where it becomes like, again, OSHA?
Sure.
What's the magic number?
Believe it or not, thi- and this is why, why I brought that up. It doesn't show it anywhere in the state of Connecticut, i- i- which is really shocking to me. Because if you do just a, a simple Google search on CO2 levels, you'll find that once you get above a thousand parts per million, your cognitive ability starts to decrease. It, it doesn't make you ill. It just makes you sleepy and dopey. Now, me as a kid in school, I used to yawn all the time. So I don't know if it was me as a kid or if we didn't have good CO2 levels in the school when we were growing up, but, but yes, but there is no, there is no standard. And again, one of the things that's disappointing to me is going through COVID, I was really hoping that we were going to get some real definitive standards. Candidly, if you read what's in our indoor air quality from the state of Connecticut, it's old. They've moved on from indoor air quality and have now gone on to the school safety and security, and they really haven't gone back to the, to indoor air quality. So, um, I, I say to Mr. Medancy all the time, we need to do better than what the state requires of us, you know? Um, it's, it's very important that, you know, we're Southington. Please, we can do better than what the state is, right? And, and the surrounding towns. We want to always excel.
Um, and then my, my other, more of a, a statement. Um, so I know that at a couple of meetings, we were talking about different filters, um, homemade apparatus. Um, I'm actually in the process of getting filters for, uh, for my business.
Sure.
Again, it's, it's a tall order. You know, you're talking at least a thousand dollars a room for.
Sure.
A, a true system with UV lighting and everything else. But I think the other important aspect is, um, again, like that's just filtering the air that's in the building.
Correct.
That doesn't take into consideration, it can't make more oxygen, um, it boils down to, um.
Yep.
Uh, you know, air being pumped into the, the schools, I guess.
Um, so I mean, it definitely sounds like we, we have systems in place for monitoring. And I, I think certainly, um, you know, as we move forward, and what you said as far as trying to create a better climate control, especially in our elementary schools.
Um, I think that's essentially going to be key for, um, you know, moving a lot of what the air quality, again. Pollen and things like that. I, I don't necessarily think of that as air quality because we have built-in systems in our bodies to deal with that.
Sure.
Um, but you know, again, great presentation and thank you very much.
I'll definitely appreciate all the support you guys will give. Thank you.
Mr. O'Shannon?
Yeah, Mr. Romano, I was, I was cheating. I was reading along. Mr. Medancy had a hoppy of your report, so I was skipping ahead. And I think probably one of the most important things you said is that this is not new.
No.
And, and you gave light to that paragraph, right? That, that one paragraph that had the forty-seven different parts.
It's one paragraph. I mean, they talk about it in other areas, but it was one paragraph.
Which gave you, I think, an eight-page report.
Yes, exactly.
Which is, is very interesting. But the, the critical thing is it's not new. You've been doing this. Your team's been doing this. You've been working on this for a long. It's not a COVID issue. It's pre-COVID. It's post, it's during COVID. It's going to be post-COVID. Because, I mean, the number one thing that this, this administration, this board does is the safety of our students and our staff. So.
Correct.
So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I mean, I think, I think you just put it all down in writing. You made it public, which I think is the most important thing. You laid it all out there. It's now on tape. People could see it, and if they have any questions, they could reach out.
Yeah, please, any, anytime. I'm always available. You know where to reach me, even nights and weekends. I enjoy it. I do.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
If I could, before you leave.
Oh, sure.
I've had the pleasure of knowing you for a few years. There's one thing you've always, always, always taken very seriously, and that is safety. And that is reflected in your crews, the people that work with you, the people that work for you. And the pride that they take in the jobs that they do. And it's reflected in every school I've ever been in. And that's a reflection on you, Mr. Romano.
Well, I know, but I appreciate you recognizing them. Thank you.
I just have one caveat. Give us a heads up when you're planning on doing the, the air conditioning in the other elementary schools.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, just please.
You're going to see it soon enough.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Romano.
Thank you all. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving along. That got canceled. Okay. Um, we now have policy. Three, five, four, two dot one. Purp- purposes and facilities, food service, policy revision, first reading. Policy five, one, four, five, dot three, sexual harassment of students, policy revision, first reading. Science, grade one units, first reading. Library media proposal for grades three through five, first reading. And then we have the Leonard and Gladys Joel Scholarship Committee Appointment. Mr. Medancy, for our newer board members, could you explain that, please?
Sure. This is an annual scholarship that was established by this family years ago. and it's a tradition for three board members to volunteer. Student essays are submitted to you with names redacted, and you go ahead and review them and independently make recommendations of which essay you feel is the deserving scholarship winner. And that is, um, announced at the s- uh, scholarship evening that the high school holds in the spring. We don't announce it here because usually our meeting occurs before the scholarship night, we don't want to, we try to surprise all the kids with the scholarships they're getting.
Mr. Darrenowski?
Yeah, I would, uh, like to volunteer.
Okay.
I had, uh, Mr. Joel as a teacher when I was in high school. I won't say when that was.
I, I, I won't ask, I won't ask.
He was a, he, he was a great guy.
Come on, Dave, I said when I was there, so.
Do I have any other volunteers?
I, I would gladly volunteer.
Okay.
I'll volunteer.
Okay, there we go, thank you, gentlemen. Outstanding.
Can I ask, are we going to do the same procedure we've done in the past?
Yes.
Which is you have a pa- there's a packet?
There'll be a packet that'll be sent to each of us, and you read through it, and you make your recommendation, one, two, and three.
Okay.
And then it goes in, and then, uh,
It ends up like a weighted voting type of thing, yeah.
The secretary will put together the, you know, and match the numbers to see who, uh,
Sure.
Okay, now I need a motion to go back into executive session?
We have to?
We have to go back into executive session. Yes.
You need a motion for that? Or do we just?
We don't need a motion.
We don't, we don't need a motion? We can just go back into executive session, then we will go back into executive session.